Good evening. I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City clerk, roll call please. Apologize.
Good evening. I would like to call the special meeting of the planning commission to order at five o'clock PM.
Thank you. City clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Moura.
Here.
Councilmember Moura.
Here.
Councilmember Sarno.
Here.
Mayor Prothamsamora.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
Commissioner Freskus. Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rounds.
Vice Chair Carver Hall.
Here.
Pierre Jimenez.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now move to public comments. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on item number four only. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. For those that are here to make a public comment in person, you will have an opportunity once the city clerk announces your name. You will have three minutes to speak. Staff will respond to any questions after everyone from the public has had an opportunity to speak. City clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we don't have any speakers today.
Thank you. I will now close public comments. Study session, item number four. Targeted zoning ordinance update, a presentation by the consulting firm of MIG on revising specific sections of the city zoning ordinance for consistency with state law and the recently adopted general plan on creating new mixed use standards and land uses. I would like to call on Director of Planning, Wayne Morel.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, Planning Commission. On February the eighth of this year, the city of council approved its first comprehensive general plan update in approximately thirty years. As part of that general plan update, the housing element was also approved. Granted, this was a monumental task, but there is still more work that needs to be done. For example, the zoning map needs to be updated for consistency with the general plan. The housing element still needs to be certified by HCD. And with the general plan that was approved, there were a number of mixed uses that were created. Well, those mixed use, we still need to create development standards for those. Additionally, we also took on the task of revamping the nonconforming provision of the general plan. So today we will have a presentation by Jose Rodriguez, who will go over some of these items and also the next step moving forward. Jose?
Is it on? There it is. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, commission, Chairperson Jimenez and the planning commission. Many of you know, my name is Jose Rodriguez and I was involved with the general plan update and good to see you all again. So now we're moving forward to talk about the next phase of the general plan and it's the implementation of some of the programs. And again, this is still to meet some of the housing element requirements. And so I'll kind of detail a little bit of what that involves. Just real quick for the agenda, I will just briefly talk about the general plan update that we did earlier this year. And then I'm going to talk a little bit of the, some detail about the new mixed use standards. You know, remember in the general plan, we approved the land use plan that does include some mixed use. And so now we're doing the more detailed zoning update for those mixed use. And so we want to introduce at least some, some of the concepts that we're looking at and get a little bit of direction and then answer any questions you have on mixed use. Just briefly going to talk about the nonconforming zoning update that we did as well, or at least the policy direction in the general plan. So now we're going to talk a little bit just briefly about some of the zoning changes and what we are making in terms of the nonconforming section, discuss some of those as well. The public engagement process as well as updating the zoning part, we did a lot of engagement through the general plan. But I want to talk about just briefly the zoning engagement that we're doing as well. And then next steps. All right. So let's provide that brief overview. Part of the zoning update that we are doing is, as I mentioned, mixed use, updating the mixed use districts. There are some other sections in the zoning code that we are also addressing, I'll talk about briefly. But the other key section that came out of the general plan process and through, if you recall the, those hearings, at least study sessions, the numerous study sessions that we had towards the end, was the nonconforming. So if we made changes to the general plan, how does that affect property owners? So we did, we are in the process of still revising the nonconforming and amortization section. So I'll talk about the process that we're doing to update that. Separate from our work, AE Comm, I know has met another consultant that's preparing the objective development standards. They met with you previously several weeks ago and that's an ongoing process as well. Other sections that we are updating as part of the general plan through the zoning is creating a new high density residential zone, changing and at least looking at some of the development standards in, in the zoning code. And I'll talk about the timing on some of those as well. Just real briefly, other sections, Wayne mentioned the zoning map, modifying the R3 again for consistency with the general plan. And there's some requirements that the state is, is making sure that not just Santa Fe Springs, but all cities as part of the housing element update is required, is required to do. For example, just changing the definition of a family, adding what's called a low barrier navigation center, which is kind of a quick kind of emergency shelter, particularly designed for those that just became homeless. Maybe they were living in an apartment for many, many years, but just became homeless, allowing those type of facilities, again, not just in Santa Fe Springs, but this is a requirement for all cities. And then some other processes that the state is requiring cities to update. So as you recall, as Wayne mentioned, back in February earlier this year, we've adopted the general plan. And again, these were the elements that were all included in the general plan. Engagement, I'll just briefly touch this. We, you know, we talked about having the project website. We did focus groups, numerous study sessions, there was a survey and so forth. So I won't go through that. We talked a lot about what we did as part of the general plan update. And again, got us to this land use plan with new designations, the new high density residential zone. Freeway commercials addressed through the overlay in the zoning, but a new zone for, for the land use plan, several mixed use zones, and then adding the light industrial zone. So let's jump into the mixed use zones. So why are we changing the mixed use? Again, the key thing is consistency with, consistency with the general plan land use plan. That's required by state law. They have to be consistent. The general plan provides the plan use policy, the zoning provides the nuts and bolts, the standards, the height, the setback. If you recall in the general plan, just briefly talked about, hey, the heights of the building, the FAR, the density. The zoning section is really going to talk about exactly what allowed uses are allowed, what's permitted, what's not permitted, what's an accessory use. So it's going to provide more details, including the development standards, how mixed use buildings are built, what are the setbacks? What are the different requirements for entries and landscaping and so forth? So those are all going to be included in the mixed use. Another reason, well, we obviously want consistency with the general plan. However, we're pushing to adopt the mixed use, particularly just the mixed use standards by October fifteenth. And the reason why is there's a state law requirement. One year after housing elements were due, you have to change the zoning to accommodate the housing that we've identified in the housing element to meet the RINA. Everyone remembers what the regional, the regional housing needs assessment. Remember, we identified nine hundred and fifty-two sites that the land use plan can accommodate. We also now have to make sure the zoning could accommodate it. That's merely what the housing element does, is make sure that the land use and the zoning map and the development standards can accommodate that nine hundred and fifty-two. That's why we're pushing on a kind of a streamlined approach here to quickly adopt the mixed use standards. And then we are, we will make some of the other changes, take our time to make the other changes to the zoning code as well that are required as well. But they don't, the key thing on the October fifteenth is per state law is getting the zoning, at least for the districts, to allow for that additional capacity in housing units. So mixed use, I threw in a bunch of pictures of what mixed use look like. Everyone knows it's that vertical building. You can typically have commercial on the ground floor and residential on the upper floor. Mixed uses is also horizontal. You can have a little commercial center adjacent to a residential apartment or condominium complex, as long as there's pedestrian connections on one property. And so if you recall in the land use plan, we've identified three mixed use districts and then within three nodes, the northern node is really to accommodate or respond to the potential, I shouldn't say potential, but future light rail station on, on Washington. And so we looked at, we identified mixed use in that area. In downtown, allowing for mixed use, but flexibility with some of the existing industrial and office buildings. So the mixed use standards will, will show for that. And then lastly, down by MetroLink, also mixed use. Again, residents there easily can cross the street and walk to the MetroLink station. So I'm going to provide an overview of some of the, what we're looking at in terms of the mixed use zones. So one of the key parts is both the development standards and the allowed uses. So we will have new use tables that really identify specific uses that are permitted, that require a conditional use permit, that are not permitted, and are also an accessory use. We're updating that specifically for mixed use. So we'll have a new table and we will see a little bit out of alignment. So if you go to the, the commercial zone, you'll see it only has that list. There's no table associated. That's the older part of the code. We're letting staff know that down the road, when you do update the zoning code, the commercial zones, you can update and we'll have now a new set of use tables that, that some of the other commercial zones could model after. Each use will have a definition to clearly identify what use is permitted, not permitted, so forth. So for example, a live work unit, there'll be a specific definition of what is a live work unit. You know, the residential unit, it's still connected to a small commercial frontage, could be an office and allows for like incubator uses and kind of start off smaller businesses that they can get their foot on the ground and then move to a bigger building, but then still also have a residential access. And live work is very common in many, many communities. But we'll, all of the uses in mixed use, multifamily, the different types of uses will all have specific definitions and how they differ between each zone, the downtown mixed use and the TOD areas. We're going to have specific standards, again, all organized in the tables. We're still massaging those standards now with city staff. They'll have graphics. And again, to have standards that are specific to mixed use, how are the buildings setback? How do the buildings differ between different, within, within the different zones, but also how they are addressed by different street types? So we'll want to talk a little bit about street types and I'll bring some of those questions, or at least to have a discussion about how does the different street stop, street types differ within mixed use zones? Actually, we'll just get into that now. Within mixed use zones, again, the purpose of the mixed use is to create more compact housing commercial development that again allows the walkability to transit facilities, whether it's the MetroLink or down the road. Remember, this is a twenty-year plan. Although we're looking at eight years for some of the housing to take place. But also with the light rail that's coming in, how do we create that environment that residents can live in and still see the ground floor, walk to the stations and so forth? One thing that we're looking is how do we design those streets within those mixed use districts? Do we want to require storefronts and commercials on certain intersections? Do we want to allow flexibility on secondary streets? And we do recognize that requiring so much commercial can, with market demand, you know, you want restaurants and the cafes, but sometimes those are hard to fill by some of the developers. But how do we create that flexibility for those different type uses? And where do we create that street frontage on, you know, what streets do we concentrate those on? Then there's the pedestrian friendly streets. Those are again, also we want buildings to be up front, you know, create that pedestrian friendly environment, but then maybe allow secondary parking lots or driveways or different uses that maybe require the storefront, maybe they allow some residential buildings to access the street frontage and have different entryways, little private entryways for residential uses. The key thing is where do you want to concentrate some of that commercial required storefront uses? Maybe not allow certain non-activated uses, like for example, having an office that, you know, blacks out their, their front door, you know, their front window, so you can't see what's going on, doesn't create that pedestrian friendly environment. You want something that's active, some sort of commercial, whether a restaurant you can see in and, and have an outdoor eating area. So those are things we want to consider and we want a little bit of direction with, with both the council and planning commission on what you think, at least at a high level, what's important in Santa Fe Springs on certain streets. Another key area that we know we, we would want to hear a little bit of direction is about drive-throughs. And we do know that drive-throughs are obviously auto-oriented uses and they can, many, many communities either have restrictions on drive-throughs in mixed use zones or have some sort of limitation, whether you don't want them or don't allow them or limit them and still have some sort of restaurant, but not a drive-through or have a distance requirement that drive-throughs maybe are located so many certain feet from a pedestrian, a pedestrian type street. So these are things that we want to at least start to think about. And then so when we do adjust the standards, you can provide some direction that we can put into those standards. And again, here's an example of what a storefront street looks like. So again, building oriented to the front, a lot of window space at the front facing the street. Again, the goal is to create that active street front that allows, you know, pedestrians walking, at least within that small little district, and create that walkable atmosphere. And then even a pedestrian friendly street, maybe there's, the setbacks are a little bit larger and not the entire building needs full, you know, window frontage along the front of the building and allow maybe some parking, parking area that we know that would be required or wanted in a mixed use zone. We still want vehicles to access or come to the mixed use designations. So again, allow that flexibility on other types of streets. And again, we're still working out with staff what that could look like. So storefront streets, maybe on Washington, are they required along certain, on certain streets and then the secondary streets allowing pedestrian friendly streets? And again, this is just an example. We're still working on, on how to, how to frame that and allow, allow for flexibility. Another key item that we know is going to be important is parking. And we did hear through the general plan, through engagement, that parking is important, both parking for different types of uses and they know they can impact residential areas. But then there's also the state that's pushing particularly for areas near transit on reducing at least some parkings, parking requirements. So things to consider on, you know, what kind of parking reduction standards would at least the council and planning commissions reopen. I think staff had mentioned off-site, off-site parking, off-site, well, I take that back. Off-site parking is currently allowed in the zoning code and I think there's a, so many feet that an off-site parking should be allowed, I think, Quang, I think you said four hundred or four, something like that, four hundred feet. And do we want to make those changes to the mixed use zone or make sure that those are aligned? Shared parking, if there's other uses where shared parking would be, that makes sense to have different uses or different property owners and share parking. Obviously, do we want to look at reduction of parking so many distance feet from a transit station or allowing the kind of different types of parking orientation tandem? Some of these you may not be interested at all. Some of these, you know, maybe options where a developer has to do some sort of parking management study if they're to implement some of these. So there can be some requirements if they want to apply these to a mixed use zone that if they want some sort of reduction in parking, that there's studies that are associated. So these are things that we can look at in terms of the standards on if you want to do A, B, and C, whatnot. This is what you have to do and this is the requirement. All right, let's move to nonconforming situations. We have drafted and working with staff, a set of standards that are preliminary at this point. Real brief, what is, what is nonconforming? Now, you probably remember, if you have a business or a building or even a lot that's been approved previously and the property owner or the applicant met all of the zoning and subdivision requirements and got its approval and built it, that's an established use and building and lot. But if the zoning laws change, it then becomes nonconforming. So let's say, you know, you allow a commercial use, I'm just making up an example, in a district, but then we change the commercial use and says, well, now it's only industrial, it's now a nonconforming. But hey, that business or that property owner established that use legally previously, but laws change, the zoning can change, we updated the general plan, it can change. So the nonconforming allows, based on the policy direction we heard from, from council and planning commission, this allows some more flexibility. So we started to look at that. Real quick, before I go into what was that policy direction, you know, what are the different nonconforming situations? And I kind of briefly talked about it. You can have a lot that's nonconforming, meaning a minimum square foot of the size of a lot, if you establish that legally. But maybe the zoning changes, the lot can become nonconforming. That's one type of situation. The use, commercial, residential, industrial, you know, if the zoning changes, we're looking at changing mixed use, mixed uses and the uses within those mixed uses that, you know, if we're applying that to an industrial area or commercial area, some of the uses can now become nonconforming, as well as nonconforming development. The physical properties of a building of, of the landscaping or the parking, if we change those, those also could become nonconforming. So why are we changing it? Obviously, the key thing was implementing the general plan. We've heard from many property owners during the public hearings through the study sessions, hey, if you're going to change the land use, what does that mean for my property? So we want to make sure that the zoning changes we're making are consistent with the general plan. So we do have policy in the general plan that says, hey, provide flexibility. If, if a property becomes nonconforming, allow it to continue. Minimize some of the amortization or when that property has to legally or has to be removed. Some of the things that we identified is obviously improvements that property owners have made, the investments they've made, recognizing those, particularly, you know, if they put in money into properties to take that into account. We did recognize that the nonconforming section and staff as well aware is that many of the zoning sections have been, were updated long, long time ago, some of them back in the sixties. So one of the key things that we're doing as part of the nonconforming is modernizing and making those a little bit easier to understand. There was some confusion, the current nonconforming kind of interweaves lot and uses and, and building nonconformings, but it doesn't have specific standards to those. So we're looking to clean that up and make it a little bit easier to use. And also, you know, the business friendly thing is having this clear standards and that there's no gray area or confusion. Let's see, and the last is if there's a natural disaster, updating that, that's fair for property owners. If a building was to burn down, how much of it has to be burned down so you can build back to what the older zoning allowance is? Or if it, if it's a complete burn, what other, other natural disasters, you know, earthquakes? How much, how much of that damage is, what can be rebuilt either at the older standard or the new standard? And so those are also being updated as well. And then this is just a reminder of what the policy that we placed into the, the general plan. And again, is making sure, it was that flexibility, making sure that businesses, lots, properties that were legally established, even if they were changed by the general plan or zoning, you know, make sure that they're allowed to, or allowing them to still to continue to operate, but still have some standards in there if they wanted to expand, you know, requiring a conditional use permit and allowing for just basic repairs and maintenance for that particular property. Just real quick, our new approach to it again is recognizing specific standards for lots, for the non, for the, for the build, the building property standards, parking setbacks and so forth, and then specifically for the uses. So it's really clear what the different standards are for nonconforming based on the type of nonconforming you have. We know that several properties could have multiple types of nonconforming. We want to make sure it's clear what those different standards are. So real briefly, I want to just talk about the public engagement that's been going on thus far for both the mixed use and the nonconforming updates. So we did form, if you recall, as part of the general plan, there was a general plan advisory group. And I know, I think some of you were in, in that group. We've now taken some of those members and invited new members and created a new zoning advisory group. So we're meeting on a regular basis with this group and introducing what the zoning changes are and introducing draft text. So on June twenty-ninth, we had an introductory meeting with the, we'll call them the zag, the zag meeting and let them know what, what the process was. On July twenty-seventh, we did have a specific meeting to review the nonconforming section. So we have given them draft nonconforming section specifically for the zoning advisory group. They had given us some comments on the nonconforming sections. Comments there, the tone generally is good. It does, they were looking for a little bit more flexibility. If there was a big downturn, you know, we just had a couple of downturns with a, you know, recession earlier, you know, a few years ago, more than a few years ago, but then with COVID. And that was kind of, you know, a big hit to industrial and commercial properties. And so they're looking at, there's a way to provide a little bit of flexibility in the event there's another big downturn. And so that maybe some of the uses closed down and, you know, it took a little longer for them to come back and they didn't want to affect their nonconforming uses, requirements for that. And then some more clarification on vacant nonconforming, how long of a use had to be vacant before it became nonconforming and make sure that was cleaned up. So we've had some good comments from the zoning advisory group. Also in July, we did have a community forum. We met in here, we did allow people to attend in Zoom and we introduced the different mixed use kind of at a high level, hey, what, what are we looking to update? You know, here are the nonconforming, this is what we're looking for mixed use. And so we, we've allowed the community to allow to come to those meetings. Study sessions, I know you already had a study session with the other consulting firm AE Comm that is working on the objective development standards. And then now we're meeting today to talk about the focus zoning amendments. And so those are the kind of the existing or previous meetings that we've had. More meetings to come. So in June, we had that previous meeting. In July, we had a handful of meetings. But today, on August, we're having our planning commission study session and city council study session. We're looking to have another zag meeting to review the zoning, the mixed use standards. And then we're, we are setting up a meeting with the business working group, the same group that we met as part of the general plan to show them the nonconforming section, some of the mixed use sections. And then talking with staff, we are going to at least try to meet with different property owners where we know both the zoning is changing and let them know upcoming meetings and introduce where they can review documents and if they have any questions or comments on any of the draft documents that they can provide comments. So as I mentioned, the goal is pushing towards October fifteenth. So we're looking to have planning commission already, I know we're, we just started August, but in, in September is looking to have at least planning commission having a public hearing on both the mixed use and the nonconforming sections. And then the minor, primarily we're only focusing on for the zoning, the, the changes to the zoning code that affects the RINA. That's the concentration for October fifteenth and the nonconforming sections as well. And then in October, have the first hearing on October fourth for the first reading, since this is an ordinance update, and then have a second reading on October eighteenth. So with that, that concludes my presentation, but both staff and myself are here to answer any question. And then my colleague Laura Stetson is also on Zoom to answer questions as well. So that I'll let you know, or let me know if you have any questions or comments.
All right. Does the council or commission have any questions or feedback?
So on some of these land uses that we're using for mixed use with obviously residential and commercial, you did mention parking. How would we allow to have both uses and reduce parking on, on like a commercial piece of land? Especially if it's not conforming to a residential area, a lot of the mixed use places are in our business communities. So how would we densify that? So how would we densify that to allow people to live there, but not be able to walk? So they would obviously need cars. So parking would be a concern. Would there be a minimum or maximum for land size of what we would be allowing in that area? And then what are the what are the concerns if we don't comply with this? What what fines do we have? What what happens if we don't comply to some of the uses that we are looking to do, especially for housing? And then is there a difference of, is there a ratio between housing and your mixed use of businesses? How many housings do we have to have compared to businesses?
All right. So I'll start off with the parking, the parking question first. So one of the things that we're looking at, so obviously you're right. So we're looking at mixed use. And that can again have a residential component and a commercial component. What we're, what will, what we're looking at in terms of the requirements is still, you know, meeting the typical parking requirements that the cities currently has in their current current zoning for both, you know, the residential component or or the commercial component. So if you have a commercial component, you know, if there's a requirement for still for, you know, so many parking spaces per thousand square feet, you know, there's still going to be parking requirements. There's not going to be, we're not going to reduce the parking so much that, you know, there's not going to be any parking left. Key things that we're looking for is we recognize, hey, Santa Fe Springs is still a car oriented community. We we know that it's still not easy to easily just walk around. But if you're near the transit station, you know, maybe it's a small percentage reduction, you know, I forget what the standard is for multifamily, but it's still, there's still a certain number of parking spaces for each unit plus the visitor requirement or guest parking. And so if it's within a transit station, is it a, you know, 5% reduction of maybe the residential component or 10% or whatnot? Or, you know, you still require the full parking requirement, but then look at ways to manage that parking through parking management study that says, hey, you're going to have different uses that are all within walking distance. And should they be, you know, should there be some shared reciprocal parking agreements between different property owners or different uses that allows, you know, maybe there's a use that requires more parking during the day, but at night, you know, the parking lot's empty. So then residential that come in the evening could utilize that parking during the evening. How to just manage that parking a little bit better? So we've developed standards. So what makes, you know, what you think would make sense? What was the other? Oh, concerns and fines. HCD is not saying, hey, you have to reduce this much parking. They're not saying multifamily residential. And HCD is the Housing and Community Development Department by the state that has to certify the housing element. They have requested that the city in their housing element have a program that you look at the parking requirements and making sure that the parking requirements are not creating a financial constraint to the development of housing. So if you're putting too much parking onto requiring too much parking for residential, they they want to make sure that it is not a constraint to development. So that's really, there's no fine or, you know, punitive. But they, but they are requiring is requiring to look at that. And so that's still the, that's something that we're still looking at with the mixed use and making sure we have that that standard set that that works. We also want to don't create impacts to, you know, if you have a mixed use area to surrounding even industrial uses or residential areas where now we have people parking because you have such, you know, you have, you know, different uses that are demanding more parking, which is a good thing because that that's, you know, it's a successful development and you're you're you have people coming in and and looking for parking, but we don't want to create those impacts. So it's going to be that balance. Councilmember Sarno to get that standards right with still making sure that we don't create that constraint. The second part is how much housing versus commercial. So that's one thing that we're still looking looking at is the minimum requirement so that requirement for having commercial along certain streets, particularly if it's adjacent, directly adjacent to the proposed, the proposed station or near the metro link or key corners where we do at least want some sort of commercial. The commercial component is probably going to take up a really small part of a vertical mixed use. So that first floor. And maybe it's just the corner of the building. And the rest of it could be residential or in certain areas, it's just commercial only or in certain areas, just residential only. So the key thing is providing that flexibility in the mixed use, but still want, I know staff's desire is to still have some commercial uses. You know, for example, Washington is primarily a commercial corridor. And you have the Chris and Pitts and you have various commercial. If we're replacing with mixed use, you know, we're not going to have that same amount of commercial there. There's a couple of that big box that's now the planet fitness. But let's say some of those smaller commercials turns over and we have mixed use that is still allow some of the commercial to to remain. And that's so that percentage is not necessarily a direct percentage, but it's just that requirement for some commercial within certain areas and not within the entire district.
That area, I mean, like you mentioned, the Washington, it's more ideal, even if you wanted to put more residential, because it is walking distance to stores and and other things. And our other areas where we have, where we have selected to put mixed use, you're talking like, let's say it's Norwalk and Telegraph, where you don't have nothing right there that you can go walk to. So you would obviously have to either assume that, you know, we're going to put less housing on top of a commercial use building or mixed use building or even doing single studio housing for one person. That way we know it's one car, one person rather than multi-use and having more than a family living there.
Right. So I think the standards that we'll set up is again to provide at least some of that flexibility. However, we, the goal also of converting to that mixed use in certain industrial and commercial land again, was also again, the state requirement to make sure we meet that 952 units. Because when the zoning standards restrict the number of units that we've identified in the housing element, the state will come back and say, well, you no longer have enough of the lower income sites. You now have to update your housing element again. So again, we're, it's kind of a little bit of balancing balancing act. You know, we want to make sure we have the flexibility in the zoning standards to allow, you know, the different uses to come in. But still, we still maintain that we have enough housing units to come in on certain zoned properties to that we meet the arena. So staff has a little bit of that juggling act to do as different developments come in and take up those different affordability levels on the housing because the state's really concerned more about the affordability levels, the lower income and the very low income housing.
Madam Mayor, if I may, Vice Chair Carver has a question. She's attending virtually. May she ask her question? Vice Chair Carver Hall, are you able to unmute yourself?
Yes, I just stood right now. My question would be somewhat to what council member Sarno said with regards to the Washington corridor. And you were talking about the drive-throughs or maybe restricting. Well, that's where everybody's at. And within the proposed metro link stations, I don't see us restricting anything in that area since it's all within walking distance. With regards to the multi-use on Washington and Broadway on the bottom where the Chris and Pitts, where they decided to leave, there are other units there where if you go by there, it's not inviting, it's blackout. You can't even enter through the front, you know. So we would have to look at that. On the Broadway side of Washington, where the veterans development is going up, my concern, along with the other commissioners, and I'm sure the council members was a parking in that area because it's totally surrounded already by apartment buildings that are even using that lot, which we know they're not going to be able to, but that street is already in bad shape and many just fighting for parking spots. So we are going to restrict, we're going to need to really look especially at that area per se. And that is my concern is the parking on especially the Washington and Broadway section. It just seems like it's going to be worse. So are we, the city able to maybe even restrict on where the driveways are coming in when they're going into that building? Will they be able to put like a red zone there? And if so, how is that also now going to impact?
Okay. Well, the first part, it sounds like there was comments about, you know, recognizing where there are parking limitations that are already occurring. And then as we develop mixed use with higher intensity. And if we look at, you know, even some parking reductions, how does that further exacerbate, you know, existing conditions? And so, so yeah, we'll definitely want to make sure we're talking with staff and take that into account. And again, I think looking at having that flexibility to staff and to, you know, at least recognize some of those parking issues and then whether reductions need to take place or not. Or, you know, those don't get folded folded in as part of the development standards. So yeah, we'll definitely take into account and look at specific areas and work with staff to identify where those impact areas are. And we do recognize those apartments. You know, just south of Washington is one of the highest density areas in the city. And I know the boundary kind of comes in and out there with the sphere of influence and some single family neighborhoods, but some of those apartments are higher than what those are what we call nonconforming apartments because the current zoning doesn't allow. Well, actually, we did change the land use. One of the part of the land use changes we did was to accommodate some of those higher density apartments. We know those are not going anywhere soon. But based on what I've heard from a commissioner on the on those parking requirements, we'll we'll work with staff to make sure those are are looked at. And then the development standards take those into account where there's impact areas.
Yes.
Okay, regarding mixed use, so shared parking, could you elaborate more on that? Is it with wouldn't it conflict with commercial use and and residential? Excuse me?
Yeah. Yeah. So shared parking is really, it's a parking management strategy that allows different property owners, but also different properties to kind of use their parking communally. So there's a little bit of reduction in some parking, but that knowing that the parking for one use can be offset by the a different use in the in that mixed use zone. So the key thing there to determine, you know, how different peak hour parking requirements change and how the different uses respond to different parking is to do parking, parking demand studies to ensure while this type of use, or if, you know, if it's adjacent, if we know it's an office building that's being part of the mixed use. And we know that the parking demand for an office, you know, is from eight to 5:00 PM. And that's when the parkings, parking, you know, stalls are going to be primarily full. But then in the residential, everyone goes to work. And so the parking management study will look at when the different, you know, peak hours change for parking requirements. And then that there's parking agreements to make sure that that office doesn't block, you know, future uses to use that parking if if there is a shared parking agreement. So it's really meant to work with different types of uses that have different peak hour parking requirements and share the parking reduces the cost for for development. And it's an efficient way to utilize the different parking spaces within multiple uses when you know that some residence or commercial or office, you know, are walking within a short distance to their to their buildings.
My comment, I know that you're talking about a lot about flexibility. And I guess I would like to see us flexible when it comes to the drive-throughs, especially if somebody's meeting their Rena numbers or helping us out with Rena numbers. I don't want to constrict anybody, especially during this pandemic. We know that a lot of people utilize, you know, drive-throughs and those are the businesses that actually stayed in business. So I, you know, I don't want to really see the restrictions upon that, especially if we have these developers or landowners who are helping us out with Rena numbers, you know. So if we can work with them, I would like to see that.
Okay.
Yes, I'd like to address. It's 952 units that are going up. And
And I'm sorry, 952 units going up. And everybody, I mean, parking's a commodity in Southern California. Have we considered underground parking?
Okay, so parking has a cost. So most inexpensive parking space is the surface parking lot. And so if you look around Santa Fe Springs and even the surrounding communities, just within this region, or I mean, this little area, yep. You know, there's not a lot of parking structures. Where you find the parking structures, well, let me, let me back up. So you have the surface parking lot, the street types, three types, the surface parking lot. Then you have the above ground structures. And then you have the underground. The cost to go, so it's, and these are, these are my old numbers when I was back in school, but roughly it's like 25,000 for each surface parking lot. That's how much each one costs. If you go to a structure, they double in costs. They go to 50,000 for each because now you have to support, you have to pay for the structural improvement of a parking structure to withstand the weight of, you know, 100 cars. So there's steel and and studies, you got, you get it.
I understand.
Then you go underground, then you got to suck up all the the emissions from the vehicle. So there's that. So the cost just then it triples the cost. So the the market, the market pays for the market man in terms of studies, in terms of development, how much they can provide the leasing for offices for commercial, how much the rent for or the sale of residential. It has to pencil out that you can build underground parking. Otherwise, it won't get built and the development won't get built. Now, obviously, staff will will have the mixed use standards to allow maybe down the road where the market, the land value is so much where that means you have to make sure the income coming in through the leasing can offset and pay for the added cost for parking. So that's where the parking becomes really important is making sure you're not overbuilding because then it becomes too expensive where the development can't pencil out. So obviously, this applicants and developers are doing the pro forma, pro forma analysis to make sure it all pencils out. So yes, parking, park underground parking is fantastic. It's great for Pasadena, downtown Los Angeles. But we're here, the market, the the cost per land's a little bit different. So yeah.
I I understand. I was just saying the amount of ADUs, 952, that's
Well, it's a matter of housing units. And again, remember, the city is not required to build any of these units. You just have to have the land use and zoning in place to accommodate those. The market, the private market will build the housing. So the state's making sure that there's no constraints in your zoning, in your governmental process that would restrict that housing from being built. Then HCD now has a new accountability office and will come after cities a little bit more a little bit more in our, in the future.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I have a question?
Yes.
Um, the date of the 10/15, the deadline. It seems like there's a lot that we have to do for that. Do you think we're right? Is our, is our timeline good? Do you think we're rushing it? We're not going to have to wait to the 11th hour like we had to do the general plan?
No, I I understand the, so the state law is requiring for cities to make sure that they to accommodate the house. So let's say we don't adopt by October 15th. Basically, what that means is the state will use their enforcement officer off office to then go after the cities that are, hey, why haven't you adopted? Right now, our understanding is the state has their handful with this housing element cycle. We understand right now in the SCAG region, less than 10% of the cities have adopted their or have certified their housing elements. And we've heard from the state that they probably will not be looking to go after cities that are at least, you know, we've developed the standards. In the event we need to push it out and that we need more time, we're going to have a lot of study sessions within the next month. If we're hearing a lot of feedback from from property owners, we'll we'll work with staff to see, well, do we need to extend it out another couple of weeks or so forth. We do know that there are other cities in California that even haven't started their housing element yet. So we anticipate that HCD will probably be going after those cities first. So if we're a little bit beyond October 15th, I guess not the end of the world. We'll, I think staff will make sure. beyond October fifteen, I guess not the end of the world. We'll, I think staff will make sure letting HCD know, hey, we're working to, to get the housing element updated. The, the, the polit- the requirements are really stringent at this time and that we're moving, making progress on the zoning as well. So not like we haven't started because we know many other cities have, are way behind in Santa Fe.
Madam Mayor?
I have a question.
Continue, please.
Um, let me, let me go back to the parking, the mixed use. Um, I have a question. Now, to balance things out with the residential and the commercial, are we going to post signs like when it's usable for residents and when it's not usable, like when they do street sweeping? Like Tuesdays, no parking from this time to that time? Or are, are we initiating things?
In terms of parking.
Controlling the shared, let, you know, parking use.
Yeah. So that's all identified. So what staff would, would request from the applicant is a parking demand a management study. And that all gets every single aspect of how parking is managed through signage, through, you know, the different uses. Uh, that all gets identified and staff has to approve that type of uh, management plan. Um, and so that it details those type of uh details. Uh, that gets addressed uh, in a, in a plan. And uh, the, the zoning doesn't cover those details because some of those can, they, they need to, those can vary based on different uses.
Thank you.
Um, as far as the housing element goes, um, is it going to be strictly rental or these for sale or these up to the developer and is it going to be income market value or?
Uh, there's no requirement in the zoning that allows it to be whether it's going to be owner occupied or renter occupied. Uh, the state will look at that as a constraint. The state does look at to see, so if you recall, um, the very lower income, uh, the requirement from the state is making sure you have that higher density so that, because what the state uh, based, and this is all the cities in, in California, is that the higher density development is more amenable to building affordable housing. And so we do know that affordable housing, you have to get it subsidized. You have, there has to be a subsidy to lower the rent, to lower the cost of the housing so that the subsidy has to come in through grants and so forth. But the state, the way they look at it is making sure that you have certain densities to meet that affordable housing. Um, and obviously there's a, there's goals that the city can have in terms of providing more ownership. Uh, so when they do own property, um, and if they're pursuing ownership uh or pursuing affordable housing, uh, that there's, you know, we can push towards more um owner, owner occupied or for sale like condominiums. But there's nothing specifically that the state says you have to build rental only or you have to build owner, owner only.
All right. Are there any other questions, concerns? Uh, I would like to say that the parking seems to be the hot ticket right here. We have to really work on the parking. Uh, if I were a resident there and I came home and there's no parking for me, I think I'll, I'm going to get a little upset. So I know the parking would be an, an issue. And a lot of people do work from home too. So uh, it's something to look into. We really need to focus on the parking. I would like to thank our commissioners and our council for all their input on, on uh this, this parking, this, this project right here. If there's no other questions, I would like to adjourn the city council meeting. And thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to adjourn the planning commission meeting at five fifty-four. Thank you.